Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to Government Center. We're absolutely delighted that you are here. I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Macon-Bibb County Commission for June the 20th, 2017. I will discuss a couple of changes to our agenda after we get started, but we always start first with an invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. And so, tonight, Scott Dickerson is going to give us an invocation and will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by one of our GCAP students. Would you please stand as you are able for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance?
Would you pray with me? Living God, who we know by many names and through many experiences, as we ask your blessing on us this evening and the community we represent, we gather first in a spirit of gratitude. For the breath you put in our lungs this morning, for the many signs of your presence that have surrounded us throughout this day, we give you thanks. We hope you have given us eyes to see them. For the opportunity to gather with others whose lives we share in as members of this community, some whom we know and others we do not yet know, we give you thanks for each of them and for all of them, for the concern they have for our life together and their desire to do what is in their power to better it. We thank you that we live in a community and a nation that offers these freedoms to participate in the political process and invites all who would to share in this work. We thank you for those whom we have called to lead us, for the mayor and our commissioners, for their staffs and all the many who support them, for their service and generosity of spirit, we give you thanks. And for all of these things and the many blessings we enjoy that are too numerous to name, oh God, we give you thanks. Now, we ask that you would fill this room with your presence and our hearts with love for you and for our neighbor. Give us wisdom and clarity as we seek to speak and discern the truth. Give us compassion to consider the needs of those most vulnerable among us and to ask what voices need to be heard from who are not here. Give us humility that we might see each other in our best light. Help us to appreciate our differences, oh God, but not see them as insurmountable obstacles. May the diversity of opinion in this room and in our community inspire us to creativity and open us up to new insights and broader, more generative paths forward. And finally, give us patience as we once again commit ourselves to our common life together for the long haul. We're mindful of the suffering in our community, oh God, and those in communities around our country and in our world. We lament with heavy hearts the violence that so often supplants honest dialogue and conversation in the public square. Help us through small but sacramental gestures of kindness and generosity toward one another, model the civility we long for in our world. Holy God, let us live as if all the good that must happen in our community and in the world depends on us, but sleep as if it all depends on you. And for our time together this evening, help us remember that the truth lies somewhere in between. Bless us in this time together, bless the ties that bind us with each other and with you and with all people and all things. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. The invocation again by Scott Dickerson. Scott is the pastor at First Baptist Church of Jesus Christ at the top of the hill. Scott, we appreciate you being here, our up-the-hill neighbor. Our Pledge of Allegiance was led by Elna Anderson. She's one of our GCAP students. GCAP stands for Georgia Civic Awareness Program for Students. And Elna is, I understand, an upcoming junior at Mount Desales Academy where she's on the excellent list and a member of the National Beta Club, Key Club, Mock Trial, and Environmental Council. Elna believes that it is crucial for young people to learn and know about government so that when they become adults, they will be actively involved. When people learn about the government, they tend to realize how much work actually goes into fulfilling all governmental duties, which could lead them to have pride in their local government and community. Notably, Elna has been selected from a competitive application process to represent Macon-Bibb County and the nation on the 2017-2018 Keep America Beautiful National Youth Advisory Council. She recently returned from New York City and Atlanta as part of the inaugural Ambassadors in Sneakers program and the Transatlantic Student Exchange with Germany. In July, she will travel to Tübingen and Berlin, Germany. Additionally, she will travel to Nara and Kurobe, Japan this summer as part of the 2017 Japan-America Grassroots Summit. Elna, thank you very much for being here. We applaud you and other members of the GCAP program. Thank you very much for being here. Next item would be to, in an abundance of caution, to confirm and clarify our agenda for tonight. At the pre-commission meeting, ladies and gentlemen, we added several new items of business that have not appeared before on the agenda, even the electronic agenda. These items were added because they were time-sensitive. I'd like to go over them now. Item KK, double K, on the agenda tonight will be an ordinance authorizing the one-time suspension of the holiday pay schedule as designated in Section 5.04 of the Macon-Bibb County Government Policies and Procedures Manual regarding the 2017 Fourth of July Holiday to include July the 3rd as a paid holiday. That'll be item double K. Item double L is a resolution to approve the postponement of the July the 4th Regular Commission Meeting until Wednesday, July the 5th, the following day, 2017, with the pre-commission meeting to be held immediately preceding the regular commission meeting. That's item double L. Item double M is a resolution to authorize the mayor or his designee to execute a change order to the construction contract with Warren Associates for the construction of additional improvements at the South Macon-Bibb County Recreation Center, which are required to accomplish the intent of the project as described in the original bid documents to be paid out of 2017 SPOLOX funds. That'll be item double M. And double N is a resolution to deny an alcoholic beverage license that was submitted by Bee Hall Petroleum Incorporated doing business as Supergas located at 2760 Montpelier Avenue. That was time-sensitive and that has been added and will be item double N. And finally, there's an item double O that is an intergovernmental agreement between Macon-Bibb County, the Board of Education, and the Industrial Authority, and that was added again as it was time-sensitive as well. That'll be item double O. That will conclude our agenda for tonight. There was some discussion about the possibility of the Rosa Parks Square changes and revisions being brought up tonight. That will not happen. It is not on the agenda and will not be discussed tonight. So if you were here for Rosa Parks Square, we're not going to make any, take any further action. That will be discussed at committee meetings next week where we'll have additional discussion about that. So if you were here for that, that's not going to happen tonight. Can I get a motion to add these items and clarify the agenda? By Schlesinger motion, second by Commissioner Lucas, further discussion, hearing none, all in favor of adding these items to our agenda for action tonight, signify my saying aye? Oppose, no? The ayes have it, so we are official now with an agenda that has those additional items for action tonight. That then brings us to the first item of business, which is the approval of our minutes from our regular commission meeting of June the 6th and the pre-commission meeting of June the 6th. Those minutes have been prepared and distributed in advance. Can I get a motion or if there's a change, motion, is there, hold on. Commissioner Schlesinger?
I was just making the motion.
Motion to approve, motion to approve the minutes. Thank you very much. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Beckel on favor of approval of the minutes, signify my saying aye? Oppose, no? The ayes have it, the minutes are approved. There are no invited guests for appearances tonight, but we welcome each and every one of you to Government Center and to this meeting of the Macon-Bibb County Commission. The next item on our agenda is Public Comments on Agenda Items. Mr. Lucas?
Ms. Mayor and fellow commissioners, I failed to mention that we would have some special guests tonight. These are members of the Ad-Hoc, the Senior Citizens Ad-Hoc Committee who heard from you today on the new senior center that is on our agenda. So if it's appropriate, if we could have them to stand and recognize them for all of their service on getting us to where we are, is that...
Certainly. Members of the Senior Citizens Ad-Hoc Committee that were here earlier today and were invited by Ms. Lucas to be part of the meeting tonight.
Can you give them a hand, please?
So we thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
We have several people who have, I'm sorry, Commissioner Watkins, I'm thanking.
Oh, I was gonna make a, I know you got the budget ordinance as item GG way down after we get tired, but I was hoping since it's so important, maybe we can move that item to item A, so I was offering that as an agenda amendment.
Motion to take item GG out of order and move it up to item number one?
Yes.
Is that right, or item A? Motion and a second by Commissioner Tillman. Further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor of taking item GG, the budget, out of order and making it the number one item, signify my saying aye? Oppose, no? The ayes have it, we'll take up item GG, the budget, as the first order of business under the old business section. That brings us next then to the Public Comments on Agenda Items, and there are several people who have signed up to talk to us tonight about agenda items. That gives us an opportunity to hear you before we vote on it tonight. The first is DePong Bajat, about 2760 Montpelier Avenue, and Bee Hall Petroleum Alcoholic Beverage License. Would you come to the podium, sir? You will be recognized for five minutes, and I apologize if I mispronounced your name. Perhaps when you get up, you can pronounce it correctly for me.
Yes, thank you for letting me speak.
Yes, and you have to get fairly close to the microphone. You can adjust it up if you need to. Well, now you can put it up. That's right, do it any way you want to do it.
Thank you, honor of the mayor and councilmember for letting me speak on behalf of Bee Hall Petroleum. We just here for the, what your decision was on this alcohol license.
And that will be item, it's down toward the end of the agenda, I'll tell you that. I believe it is...
N-N?
N-N, that's exactly right. Item N-N-N, and it's a, it is, it will be a resolution to deny the alcoholic beverage renewal license. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. So what did you decide? What did you decide on that, sir?
It's here for approval, so the recommendation, the recommendation that was made is to deny the renewal of the alcoholic beverage license, and that is on the agenda tonight for final approval, to deny the license.
So can I know the reason why it was denied?
Yes, sir. It's actually spelled out in the resolution, and we can get you a copy of the resolution. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Commissioner Tillman, you want to shed a little bit of light on this?
No, no, I just wanted you to, the audience has five minutes to speak for against an item that they disagree with. I don't think, you know, we're supposed to explain and have a, I thought the rules that we don't go back and forth with patrons. So I would just ask if you just explained to the audience, those that signed up, what we're supposed to be doing, we can, you know, move forward like that. Because I don't know if we're here to explain everything in detail on this entire budget. So I was just trying to, you know, avoid all of that.
Point, point well made, Commissioner Tillman. So the idea is, this is your time to tell us what you think the outcome should be. So if you, if you have a feeling of whether or not the alcohol beverage license should be renewed, now would be your time to tell us why, or why it should not be denied.
I mean, to us, we doing everything law tell us to do, and for the last two, three months, we even had the window service there. I mean, the customer can't even come inside the store no more, so we only serve through the window, just like similar to a drive-through window. So we don't know what else to do to be compliant with the law so we can remain open and sell
Thank you very much for being here and for those comments. I mean, when we get to item N-N, you'll hear the discussion and we'll get you a copy of the resolution, and I trust that'll answer your question.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. And the county attorney tells me that copies of that resolution are on the podium down there in case you want to pick one up. Mr. Robert Curry has signed up to talk to us about the senior center. Thank you, sir. You're recognized, five minutes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, and the general audience. I'm here representing the seniors at 1283 Adams Street and also the seniors of Macon-Bibb County as the president. We've been on the SPOLOX since 2011 to get a new center built, since 2011 to the current date. 2017, we don't, we don't have a new center. It seems as though, I'm about like the gentleman now, I want to know why, but it hasn't happened, and I'm here tonight in reference to making an effort for it to happen. I'm gonna do a little backtracking. If you don't know your past, you won't know your future. We started out with this thing, you all asked us where we wanted to locate. Now, you started out telling us where we were going. You said we was going to Bloomfield. So everybody figured the lady is far older than I, some of the ladies in the center are ninety-plus years old, they said, "Well, Mr. Curry, why we can't choose where we want to go?" I said, "Well, ma'am, I don't see why not. You worked all your life, you paid your dues." So at that time, you all said a train had left going to Bloomfield. So we took a petition, petition to Macon-Bibb County area and come up with 2,866 senior troops saying that we shouldn't have to go to Bloomfield. Okay? So we picked a location, Central City Park. At that time, it was getting time for election, the vote for the new election, the new government, and y'all pulled a bait-and-switch tactic on us. Y'all went down in the location where we had decided to get. You tore down the driving, old driving license building, played it fake as like you was finna do something after the vote went in, you throw no more dirt. Okay? Old people said, "Mr. Curry, we won't forget. That's all we gotta do is remember stuff now 'cause we up in the numbers." Okay, so after that, it come time for the new SPOLOX. The first SPOLOX was 190 million, what we were supposed to receive, I would two, two million out of. We sold the current center for, I think it was something like 750,000, so that took us up to 2,750,000. Some kind of way, we lost 400,000. Well, nobody ain't brought that up yet. Okay, so now here we are. You got an award, Mr. Mayor, for being age-friendly, age-friendly city. And we saying, "Well, I don't know who we age-friendly to, it's not us." Okay, so we going on down the road, it's time for the new SPOLOX. Okay, you say, "Well, hold your horses. We'll come up with a, we know y'all deserve a state-of-the-art center. We'll come up with $6 million, and that'll take care of y'all and do what y'all need and what everybody desire, we'll give you everything you want." So you said, "What you want?" So you said, "We want a one-stop senior citizen center where all the seniors can come in one place and get all the services." We wanted a kitchen at that time, we wanted, we gave you what we wanted. It topped out at 3.5 million. You weren't happy with that, you scaled it back down. You took out a lot of the, things for the elderly seniors, tried to do away with the country's meals program, took away some of the space, some of the restroom, wanted to take the arning off the building. Okay, so we rocked on. The seniors said, "Well, Mr. Curry, it look like they got us on the back burner. All the projects gone forward except ours." Now, in my mind, you said, "Come down here," so I come down here and keep abreast with everything pretty much going on. I think the only thing left off the 2011 SPOLOX out of all the projects, some of them you doubling back with second face, is the project on Second Street and the project at, out at Lazada. Now, I don't know why you all, all of you all chose to put the seniors on the back burner as for its priority. I asked you long ago, Mr. Mayor, I said, "All the seniors ask for is a building, you can't give them longer days." So my thing is here tonight is to say that we waited, we waited, we hope y'all will approve this, our senior citizen. And now, since we about to get to the, not the finish line, but we still, we can see the finish line, but we not there. We was hoping that the people that flourish, to have the animal shelter, they brought them blankets, toys, food, will come in like the Knight Foundation, New Town Makin', different business corporations and private industry to help us. Because you took a lot of the stuff out of the senior citizen building that we don't feel was justified, and we would like for you all to do a second phase for our project to bring it back up to where we was at 3.5 million. So my thing here, Mr. Mayor, you is the overseer of this whole Macon-Bibb County. You want a consolidation, you got it. So you representing everybody here, and everybody in each district has seniors. Age don't discriminate. If you live long enough, you gonna get old. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. We appreciate you being here and appreciate your opinion. Next, Dr. Lindsey Holliday wants to talk to us about a couple of different agenda items, the landfill closure and SPOLOX expenses and item MM, double M. Dr. Holliday, you're recognized, five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner. There's about ten items that are SPOLOX items tonight, SPOLOX dollars. When I was here two weeks ago, I told you that the SPOLOX Oversight Committee was delinquent. It has not been meeting regularly. Here another half month has passed, we still have not met, and we don't have a date set to make up our lost meetings. And this group, y'all oversee the SPOLOX Oversight Committee, and it is delinquent. So I'm hoping that y'all will realize that the voters who voted on the SPOLOX, they assumed that there would be a SPOLOX Oversight Committee that was active, and right now, I can't say that it is. So I hope that you will do what you need to do to oversee the SPOLOX Oversight Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Holliday. Appreciate you being here. Ms. Hunt, you had one non-agenda item that you listed, well, we're not going to talk about Rosa Parks tonight, but you also wanted to talk to us about the senior citizen center, which is an agenda item. So if you'll get up, pull that microphone down so we can hear you, you're recognized for five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. To the commissioners, I want to thank you for coming, getting to this point with the senior centers being brought forth. Thank you so much. I know it's been a labor, it's been hard work, and I want to thank Commissioner Lucas for hanging in there and forming the Ad-Hoc Committee and giving the seniors an opportunity to really be a part of the planning. I see that tonight is the night that you're supposed to approve the funding for this and the choosing of the contractor that will do this. I'm hoping you will vote yes. I hope it will be a unanimous yes, not some saying no and some saying yes. I'm hoping we can move forward, and after tonight, we can set a date for when we will have the groundbreaking. I do appreciate the hard work that you've done thus far bringing us to this point. I am a senior, and I would love to see this completed before I go to meet my maker.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. We appreciate you being here and appreciate your comments. Finally, Mr. Ronnie Robertson wants to talk to us about the tax, the budget, basically. Mr. Robertson, you, thank you very much for being here. You're recognized, five minutes, sir.
I was told to come down here, but anyhow. I wanted to talk to you about this proposed 3% taxing case on Bibb County, and, you know, about $750 of that tax on my property is school tax, and I'm 66 years old, and, you know, shouldn't there be a cutoff? Do you think it's fair, there's not a cutoff for people paying school tax after they reach maybe 65 or 66, something like that, they continue to have to pay school tax? I mean, especially people like me, I'm a disabled veteran, and I just don't think it's fair that we have to, older people, the retired people have to pay school tax. And I went down through this agenda here that y'all got all this money being spent here, there off the SPOLOX. It seems like they could take some of that SPOLOX money and use it for, you know, the taxes. But I've got a list of things I wrote here, how y'all could make taxes, make some more tax money, and I'm just gonna read them off real quick. And one of these dilapidated properties around Bibb County, you know, y'all tearing down, I seen where y'all acquiring them, they plan on selling them things, correct? For city, I mean, it go into the city fund, is that true? When they sell a dilapidated property, they clean them up? They spend our tax money to, you know, to clean them up and they acquire them, so when they are sold, that goes into the tax base, correct?
Again, this is your time to talk to us...
Okay, anyhow...
Rather than ask questions, because it's difficult for us to have a back and forth with you.
I got you, anyhow. And another thing, the tax on beer, per sales, per can, per drink, that's another way to make the tax money. People that's riding down the road texting, you know, they ought to write them a ticket for that, about $500, they won't be texting no more, especially if they texting the left-hand lane, that move over ta, they didn't even have a move over ticket. And littering, out there, I live on Fultonmere Road, the prison's right down the road, litter all up and down the road, you never see them out there picking up litter. They need to write some tickets for littering, too. They can make a bunch of money off of littering. And I know it ain't gonna be, it ain't gonna be long before y'all want to come up and build a jail, a new jail, I mean courthouse and all that, but that Macon Mall that's sitting out there, that save you a lot of money if they just move the jail, courthouse and all out there, and that's, and that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Ms. Robertson. We appreciate, appreciate you being here with us tonight. That's all of the people that signed up to make comments on agenda items, so we'll move next to our reports from our standing committees. The first is Operations and Finance Committee, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Beckel. Chairman Beckel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As long as this report is, I might ask for a break in the middle. Operations Finance Committee met on June 13th, 2017, took the following action. Committee approved the following agreements and contracts. Approved the intergovernmental agreement with the Macon Water Authority, provide stormwater management services. We provide a, we approved a contract with Warren Associates in the amount of $2,229,000 for the new senior citizens community center. Approved the contract with Sam Hall &amp; Sons in the amount of $1,719,500 for Amoggy Heritage Trail Walnut Creek Extension. Approved an agreement with Musco Lighting in the amount of $142,000 for lighting at Freedom Park Baseball and Softball Fields using SPOLOX funds. An agreement with Middle Georgia Outdoor Lighting, amount of $84,000 for services related installation of lights at Freedom Park using SPOLOX funds. Excuse me. The committee approved the following leases. An agreement with the Macon-Bibb County Transit Authority for lease of space at Terminal Station for the use by Business Development Services Department. An agreement with the US GSA for office and workspace in Middle Georgia Regional Airport to be used by TSA. Approved an agreement with State Properties Commission for space at 560 Olga Thorpe Street for the Department of Juvenile Justice. Also approved the Fourth Amendment to the SPOLOX timeline, project timeline. Committee also approved the following to be paid from 2017 SPOLOX bond proceeds. The appropriation of 2.5 million for the stadium improvements to Luther Williams Field. Also approved a contract to execute a purchase and sale agreement with Bloomsburg Carpet for the carpet at the Grand Opera House in the amount of $107,191. Also approved the appropriation of $2,880,000... Also approved the appropriation of two million eight hundred eighty-four thousand two hundred fifty-eight dollars for the purchase of equipment related, required to begin the closure of Walker Road landfill and the funding for the retention of an engineer for tho- for that purpose. The appropriation, we also approved the appropriation of two hundred sixty-eight thousand one hundred seventy-seven dollars for the Douglas Theater for roof repairs and restroom renovation. Also approved an appropriation of four hundred thousand dollars for the Moggi Heritage Trail Walnut Creek Extension. Also approved the appropriation of seven hundred fifty thousand for the multi-purpose sports complex, light remediation project at Matilda Hartley Elementary School. Also approved an agreement with Musco Sports Lighting and Lighting in the amount of three hundred ninety-two thousand for lighting to be installed at Central City Park Football Multi-Purpose Fields. Also approved an agreement with Middle Georgia Outdoor Lighting for the lighting to be installed at Central City Park Multi-Purpose in the amount of one hundred sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. That was only page one, no kinda, uh-
We've been busy.
Ms. Lucas for dealing?
We also approved, uh, um, a resolution to acquire one vacant lot and demolish two blighted structures located on Schaefer Place and Norris Street using blight bond funds in the amount of forty-four thousand allocated to Commission District Two, which is, uh, Commissioner Schlesinger's district. Also approved, uh, a resolution to acquire and demolish six blighted structures located on Houston Avenue, Violet Avenue, Giles Street, Bay Street, and Hawthorne Street using blight bond funds in the amount of one hundred thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars, also allocated to Commission District Two. Also approved a request for bids for repair work on storm drainage ditch located on Bartlett Street and to approve allocation of seventy-four thousand, four hundred fifty thousand in blight bond funds from District Five for Bartlett Street Storm Drainage Project, which is Commissioner Bivens' district. Committee also approved authorizing vehicle maintenance to self-fuel to outside nonprofit agencies located within the Macon Bibb County utilizing the key card system. Committee also approved the settlement in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars arising out of or connecting in any way to Olson Bernard Morris in the estate of Shavas Bernard Pool. Committee also approved the five-year short-term work program. The previous was spending money, the next is we're getting money. Uh, committee approved the following grant requests and awards. The acceptance of a grant from State of Georgia Council of Accountability Courts, Judges' Funding Committee for Fiscal Year Twenty Eighteen in the amount of one hundred fifty-eight thousand nine ninety, requiring local matching funds of seventeen thousand six hundred sixty-six dollars for a total of one seventy-six, six fifty, six fifty-six awarded to the Macon Judicial Circuit Veterans Court. Also approved the acceptance of a grant from the State of Georgia Council of Accountability Courts Judges' Funding Committee for Fiscal Year Twenty Eighteen in the amount of two hundred and eight thousand five hundred thirty-seven dollars, requiring local matching funds of twenty-three thousand one seventy-one for a total of two thirty-one seven oh eight awarded to the Macon Judicial Circuit Mental Health Court. Also approved a memorandum of understanding and accepting a grant from the Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Coordinating Council in the amount of one hundred twenty-seven thousand seven hundred two dollars for the purpose of establishing specialty courts or dockets to address offenders arrested for drug charges or mental health issues. Also approved the acceptance of additional grant award in the amount of twelve thousand six hundred eighty-four dollars from the Juvenile Justice Incentive Grant, uh, Program Funding Committee. Also accepted a grant in the amount of sixty thousand dollars from the Downtown Challenge Fund of Community Foundation of Central Georgia for the additional development of downtown Macon and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Barry Albert's DBA City Visions LLC. And last but not least, the committee approved FYI twenty eighteen budget for the operation of Macon Bibb County. And this concludes the report of Operations Finance, and you can keep your applause to it.
Chairman Beckel, thank you very much. I appreciate your thorough report. Uh, next, our Economic and Community Development Committee will report, then that report will be given by Vice Chairman Lucas. Vice Chairman Lucas?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor and fellow commissioners. Uh, it's my privilege to present this report of Economic and Community Development Committee. Uh, I chaired the committee meeting of, um, June thirteenth in the absence of our wandering chair, um, Rabbi Schlesinger, who was off on Route sixty-six somewhere, wasn't it bike riding and? Yeah, yeah. Anyway, we held it down while you were, were away. We're glad to have him back. The Economic and Community Development Committee met on June thirteenth, twenty seventeen. The committee approved the reappointment of Nancy White to serve as a board member of the Macon Bibb, uh, Department of Family and Children's Services. The committee also approved the change of hours of operation at Sandy Beach Water Park. This concludes the report of the Economic and Community Development Committee.
Uh, thank you, Vice Chairman Lucas. Appreciate that report as well. Uh, next, Public Safety Committee, and that report will be given by Chairman Shepard.
We also met on June the thirteenth and took the following action. The committee approved revising Chapter Sixteen by adding Section sixteen dash thirty-four, which, uh, is about the photo monitoring systems and how we enforce passing stop school Denied the alcohol renewal application for super gas located at twenty-seven sixty Mont P. Year Avenue, and he left, but the reason being is there's been so many law enforcement calls there in the past year, so that's the reason those licenses was denied.
Thank you, Chairman Shepard. And finally, our Facilities and Engineering Committee, and that report will be given by Chairman Tillman. Chairman Tillman?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the Facilities and Engineer Committee met June thirteenth, twenty seventeen, uh, took the following action. Uh, there was a resolution for, uh, development work on popular street commons was discussed, but did not receive the number of votes needed to get it out of committee. Uh, there also was a resolution for the proposed redesign of Rosa Parks Square, uh, and that did not receive the number of votes needed to get it out of committee as well. Uh, finally, the resolution, uh, to revise Chapter Seventeen of the Code regarding Rosa Parks Square did not receive the number of votes needed to get it out of committee. Uh, this concludes the report of the Facilities and Engineering Committee.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Tillman. Uh, next on the agenda, uh, is our consent agenda, and there are, I believe, six, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, I'm sorry, seven, uh, alcohol beverage license applications that were submitted. Um, each of these, uh, applications, uh, is accompanied by the, the requisite, uh, documentation from the sheriff, uh, that he has done a, um, background investigation of the applicant and found them to be, uh, satisfactory. The business license servicing, um, business license, uh, application, uh, found to be appropriate. Um, planning and zoning, uh, to confirm that the, the, uh, beverage, uh, or that the, the store is in the proper zoning, uh, district, as well as a measurement form by the county engineer to say that the, the application meets all of the required distance, uh, requirements for separation from certain specified structures or businesses. And finally, the ad that ran in the Telegraph, uh, feature. So each of these is, uh, accompanied by all of that documentation. Uh, the, the first is for Naz, N-A-Z, Naz Food Mart at twenty-five ninety-six Rocky Creek Road, um, and that is for a beer, a package sales to go at that location. Uh, the next is H-N-P-A Incorporated Doing Business as Circle G at thirty-eight twenty-one Northside Drive, and that is for beer and wine package sales to go at that location. Uh, next is the Circle K Store at forty-seven seventy-five Chambers Road, and that is for beer and wine, uh, package sales to go. Uh, next is the Circle K Store at thirty-nine oh-three Arkwright Road, uh, for beer and wine package sales to go at that location. Uh, next is, um, Jay Matagi Sixteen LLC Doing Business as Welcome at forty-five oh-five Broadway, uh, and that application is for beer and wine package sales to go. Uh, next is for Love's Travel Stop, uh, at eleven ninety Frank Amerson Parkway, uh, and that is for beer and wine package sales to go. Uh, and finally, uh, there's an application, uh, from, um, Goga, G-O-G-A, Goga Two LLC at twenty-two sixty, uh, Sherling Drive, uh, Doing Business as RNA Food Mart, and that is also for beer and wine package sales to go. Uh, the committee of the whole, uh, recommends that these licenses, um, all be issued as requested. All in favor, is there further discussion? All in favor of the issuance of these licenses, signify by saying aye, oppose no. The ayes have it, those licenses will be issued as requested. And that ends the consent agenda. Uh, next, uh, is the old business agenda in pursuant to a previous agreement of council. We'll go to item G-G, uh, which is the budget, and I'll ask the clerk, uh, to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to adopt a budget and appropriate sums for the operation of the Macon Bibb County Government for Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Eighteen to provide for repeal of conflicting ordinances and to provide for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Jones?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to give you some background, if I may, I don't think any of us like to suggest that we raise the millage rate, raise the taxes. But when you think back, last year, the Board of Education raised two mills, now we're talking about three mills. We've raised the garbage fee, uh, necessarily so, and now, and now we've approved adding that on to property taxes, so, uh, you gotta empathize, and we're all, uh, Bibb, Macon Bibb County residents as well. It makes the average citizen wonder, well, what in the world's going on? They're beating us over the head with a hammer here. One of the things that I'm concerned about in, in, in the new budget is the understaffed departments we've had. We've done, you know, we've all been excited about the fact we reduced the budget, uh, required by the new charter by twenty percent, and we did it in three years instead of five. We reduced the number of employees from two thousand and fifty to seventeen hundred and fifty. The downside of all this is, our many departments are understaffed. We've got great directors in all the departments that I'm aware of, and we've got some really great employees, but they're having to work too hard. We're, we're literally working them to death. And the, the ones in particular I'm concerned about are public works, parks and beautification, and facilities management. So this, what this amendment does is transfer some money that is allocated in the budget for Navisant Health, and I wanna make absolutely clear, I, I, I love Navisant Health, I love HCA Coliseum. We are very blessed in this community to have two top-rated, highly-ranked, hi- highly-awarded hospitals. But when you look at, and there's a tradition of doing this, and, and even though the amount's gone down and down, when you look at the two hospitals, you look at Navisant Health, according to Tyler and Company, they have four hundred to four hundred and seventy days cash on hand, systems net revenue approximately eight hundred million dollars, have operating margin from operations is seven percent. Indigent care is the cost of doing business. If you look at compared hospitals like Memorial Hospital in Savannah, they have a Level One Trauma Center as well, a children's hospital, highly-awarded hospital. They don't get any money from City of Savannah nor Chatham County for, to cover the cost of doing business, that is, indigent care. Navisant owns sixty-nine properties that are tax-exempt in Macon, valued at over two hundred and seventy million dollars by the Macon Bibb Tax Assessor's Office. Tax-exempt. If you apply the current rate, they would be paying a million six hundred thousand dollars in taxes. Compare that, just to be fair, to HCA Coliseum, another great hospital here, we love them both. They're the fourth-largest taxpayer in Macon Bibb County. They have sixty-four million dollars worth of valued property per the Tax Assessor's Office. They pay eight hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars in property tax. I don't understand why we have that discrepancy. We have a critical need to hire, hire employees, so what this amendment does is take that four hundred and fifty-one thousand six hundred dollars and adds four full-time employees to the three additional employees already scheduled for facilities management. Still gonna be understaffed, but this would be very helpful, very beneficial. It would add three full-time employees to the four additional already scheduled in the proposed budget for parks and beautification. They're again very understaffed, overworked. Two full-time employees to the seven additional employees scheduled for public work, so a total of nine employees, we can hire nine employees for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars and give them full benefits. We owe that to our employees. We often talk about how much employees mean to us in this community, and that is the amendment, to add these nine full-time employees, transferring that four hundred and fifty-one thousand six hundred dollars to this cause, this worthy cause. So I make a motion that we amend the budget to add these nine full-time employees in lieu of, uh, where it's scheduled to go. So that's my motion.
Uh, Commissioner Jones moves to amend the budget as stated. Is there a second? Second by Mayor Pro Tim Bivens. Mayor Pro Tim Bivens, do you wanna speak on the, on that issue?
No, my buddy.
Okay. I, 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 I will, I will come, I've got your light on, so I'll come back to you after we have a vote on, on this, and I'll, I'll come back to, to you. So then, Commissioner Tillman, your light is on also. Do you wish to speak on this amendment?
No, sir.
Okay, I, I'll, I'll, I'll come, come, come back, come back to you momentarily. Uh, Commissioner Watkins, do you wish to speak on this amendment?
Yes, sir.
You do? Okay, you'll recognize, sir.
I, I agree with you, Commissioner Jones, that there are several places in our, in our county where we should be putting more of an effort in. If your amendment was to add those nine employees because we need it, which we do, but stand alone, I would work with you to find an extra four hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars in this budget because it is needed. But I'm very uncomfortable placing or pitting these entities to get, against each other because healthcare is an important thing for our community. We live in a community where our infant mortality rate is one of the worst in the state and one of the worst in the nation. Um, obesity is an issue. We have more dialysis centers in here. Healthcare is a major issue in our community. And right now, for indigent care for folks who don't have healthcare insurance, we are paying four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars for that service. It's my understanding that, um, that it costs about fifteen million dollars for the, the hospital to run that program. Um, and the four hundred and fifty-one that we're getting is a steal compared to many other communities in our state. You mentioned Chatham County, um, and although they don't pay the hospital directly, they have several clinics that they fund that, that make that offset. Uh, Columbus Regional receives twelve million dollars, twelve point five million dollars from associated governments. Um, Taylor Regional receives two hundred and twenty-eight. Stevens County, that's not a big place, uh, four hundred and twenty-three thousand. The City of Atlanta and Fulton County contribute sixty-four million dollars to Grady Memorial. Northside, excuse me. So just, just with those alone, and several other communities are, are submitting and, and contributing across the state to this service because there is a gap when it comes to what Medicaid covers and what is covered by, by the hospital. Sure, there, they have programs that operate in excess, but there is a gap when you're just talking about that service. And our contribution, although it is half a million dollars to a multi-billion dollar company, it is noticed, and it does do our citizens a lot of good. A lot of folks are turned around because of budgetary constraints or get a lesser number of hospital days, uh, than they should have because the hospital is watching their budget, probably because we are not contributing one of, I mean, most economic indicators say that we- that we have a lot of people who are receiving this service. Um, and they're probably having to cut down their days and cut services against what their doctors want to do, but because of budgetary constraints. And as a part of the government, as a part of the community, I feel as though it's one of our obligations to fund this in some way, and half a million dollars is not a big ask considering what's happening, so, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Watkins. Uh, Commissioner Lucas, your, your light was on next. Do you want to speak on this amendment? Okay? Commissioner Lucas, you're recognized.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Mayor, fellow commissioners and citizens. Um, I, um, want to speak in opposition to this, um, amendment. I, I can't fathom a good reason for us to cut, uh, this indigent care. Uh, some years ago, we were contributing a whole lot more toward indigent care. Um, if you spend any time in our emergency facility or other places that provide medical care, you would know that there are an awful lot of people who depend on these funds for their care. Um, four hundred and fifty-one thousand might sound like a lot, but it pales in comparison with the actual cost of indigent care in this community. Uh, the, um, Navisant, um, is a superb, uh, facility, and, um, you know, it doesn't matter with me how much money they make, they're in business, they're supposed to make money. There are nonprofit, uh, entities within, uh, the ma- the, uh, throwback medical center, I'm sorry, it's Navisant. Um, there are so many services that are provided to this, uh, uh, community that we don't pay for, we don't devote any money to at all. So, I'm like, uh, Commissioner Watkins, I think that that's just a little bit, that's a way of saying we appreciate what Navisant does for our citizens. Um, these are people that they're dealing with, and it's easy to look at numbers and say, oh, they've got this kind of money in the bank. Well, I mean, you can't count somebody else's stuff. All you can do is deal with what's at hand, and what's at hand is that we want to say to Navisant, we appreciate what you do for all of these citizens in our community, and we're just kinda chipping in four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, which is not a lot, I repeat, when you look at the actual cost of indigent care and the numbers of people of our citizens, our constituents that are treated, they have to be treated in that medical facility, and many of them without, uh, cost, they just can't afford it. So, if we were approving, if we had in our budget more than that, I would support it, but I certainly am on record as supporting, uh, the appropriation of this small, small, uh, portion of the true cost of indigent care for our constituents, for our citizens. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Uh, Commissioner Tillman, got your light on. Again, do you want to speak on this amendment? Sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you're recognized.
Yeah, I was getting some thoughts together, and then we're gonna be able to come back and talk about the budget. We're just only speaking on the amendment because I, I did have some reservations also to share about the three mill. But I wanted to be clear that, uh, I've been truly educated by, uh, Commissioner, uh, Jones and, and what he has presented. I've, uh, kept the, uh, paperwork and read it thoroughly. I, I recall setting on planning and zoning and having discussions that the hospital was exempt from P and Z regulations and all of that, uh, perhaps, just like there's a new charter, perhaps at some time, we may need to go back and revisit, uh, uh, s- some of those, uh, areas and see, uh, I don't know what we could do to possibly change that, the recoup or, or be able to get some tax revenue if that's, uh, in the foreseeable future. But I, I did want to say this, um, uh, to, uh, these commissioners that's here. There are two commissioners that sit around this horseshoe that, uh, last year, uh, spent about thirty days, uh, in the hospital for serious injuries. It's two of us, and now, uh, the other commissioner can speak for themselves, but I've talked to him about it, and, and we spent about thirty days inside the hospital with serious, uh, illnesses, and, and doctors tell us both, we should've died. Uh, speaking for myself, I was at the other hospital that's in the report for three days and ended up, uh, uh, being transferred out. Back in February of last year, my aunt suffered the same illness that I was transferred out about. She suffered it in the emergency room, waiting to be treated, and died in February of last year. For whatever reason, God spared me, and I was there three days before they found out what had happened to me. Now, this is not Navisant. After the third day, I was transferred out to Navisant. And so, um, those, that, that hospital that transferred me out in those three days couldn't find what was wrong, but they ended up charging me forty-one thousand dollars. Spent those other six days over at Navisant. Not only did they find what was the issue, uh, they, they, they helped resolve that issue as they did the other commissioner, that's why we're both here today. And so, um, I don't think we really understand what the hospital brings. That's why I say I've been educated by the hospital, been educated by Commissioner, uh, Jones on this, but we cannot penalize a company, corporation, for being successful at what they do. Um, and I think that's what, what we would be doing. Now, they were willing to work with me, and I think as well, 'cause I've spoke with the other commissioners as well, they were able to work with both of us to work it out. But just imagine, we had insurance for all those folks out there that don't have insurance, that have to work with, they worked with us even though we had insurance. Uh, I can sit here today and say, a year later, I don't have any debt, uh, from either hospital because I was able to work it out, uh, w- with both. And so, um, we need to figure out a way to fund, uh, some other projects, but to just, on this particular budget, this day, this time. I hate that we wait till budget time to come up. I hate the fact that Navisant comes at us during budget time and try to educate us at the last minute. I hate that sometimes we have to, uh, pull these things and educate our, ourselves on some, on, on some of these things, but just right now at this time, and for those two reasons speaking, uh, I think we, uh, we, we should come back and probably revisit it later and see what we could do, but not right now at this budget time. We gotta get educated, uh, and learn more about what people offer because we can't penalize people for being successful at what they do. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Tillman. Uh, Commissioner Allen, did you wish to speak on this amendment?
Yes, sir.
You're recognized, sir.
Thank you. Mayor and commissioners, a lot of y'all don't remember, and I don't know what y'all were doing in nineteen eighty-nine, but at budget time in nineteen eighty-nine, I was a Bibb County Commissioner. As a matter of fact, Daddy Randall, me, your grandpa, also Albert Billingsley, um, Larry Justice, myself, we were sitting down talking about, and we were talking about the Medical Center. I'll never forget it. And I was told right quick, the Medical Center belonged to the people of Macon. It was a hospital that was owned by the City of Macon in Bibb County, and that, you know, down the road, we had to take care of our indigent. We didn't take care of other hospitals, but we took care of the Medical Center. Over the years, we've cut, we had seven million that year, is what we did in eighty-nine. We basically have cut them down to almost nothing over the years. Now, you're right, Mr. Justice, uh, the late Larry Justice and Albert worked down, uh, Daddy Randall already passed, they worked out an agreement with the, uh, Medical Center because the Medical Center was having problems financially, and they worked out a deal, and Damon King was there, in which the hospital got their own, another association tied into them where they could, could make, start making some money. 'Cause everything, I mean, that, that Medical Center was not the best hospital in the world, but the guy, was by guided by Damon King, and then Don, and now with this young lady that's up there now, this hospital is one of the best hospitals in the southeast, number one trauma center in the southeast. And, you know, I've had situations, I've got loving stints in my heart, I should be dead, and I've, I've got them all from the Medical Center. I've got a stepson who's in the Medical Center right now that was fighting for his life three, four weeks ago, and he's still alive because of what goes on at that Medical Center. Sure, they've got a lot of money, but do you know how much an X-ray machine costs? Do you know what insurance costs for them? Do you know that they have to take care of other people and other equipment needs that's there? We need to find out exactly, if y'all want to talk about, they don't pay taxes, they're nonprofit. That's what was set up, so they are a nonprofit. So are we gonna start ta- taxing other nonprofits? Are we gonna start saying, hey, y'all need to give us money also? No, we go after those least that we need to go after. It looks like they got a lot of money, a lot of buildings and such. It does look that way, but that is not the issue. Do we hurt those individuals that could least afford to lose the healthcare that's provided by the Medical Center or Navisant Health, whatever you want to call it? Do we do that? I say no. We have to take care of our hospital. It's not hospital that belongs to Navisant Health or Ms. Saunders or the doctors, it belongs to Macon and Bibb County and the surrounding communities that come in here. And that's the way I feel, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Allen. Uh, Commissioner Beckel, got your light on next. Do you wish to talk on the amendment? You're recognized, sir.
I look at it pretty simply. We are, at this point, unless we approve the amendment, are appropriating four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of taxpayer dollars from an organization that has less than forty-five days operating to a business who has four hundred and seventy-two days operating. To me, that doesn't make sense, that's not a wise use of taxpayer dollars. As relates to some of the other comments by some of the other commissioners, the, the, the ra- the, the rates that Commissioner Watkins was talking, I think has more, has less to do with us, who is offering to provide this money unless this amendment, than it does with that which receiving the dollars as relates to the mortality rates and things of that nature. It, that's not ours. I think that relies on them, not us. So, I'll be, I'll be voting in support of the amendment.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Beckel. Uh, Commissioner Jones, do you wish to have additional comments on?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it's, you know, a false picture's being painted here about we're taking away service for, services for indigent care. That's just not the case, not the case at all. And they do have four hundred and seventy-two days cash on hand, and that was a good point Commissioner Beckel made, but it's, uh, they, they're a successful, well-run operation that provide tremendous medical services to this community. They're also very successful financially, and that's great, I'm happy they are. But for us to award almost a half a million dollars of taxpayers' money to help them with the cost of business when they had a net profit of approximately eight hundred million dollars, according to Tyler and Company, who they retained, and we don't do the same, not pitting hospital against hospital, but just making a comparison. We don't do that for HCA Coliseum. I don't understand why we do it for this hospital when, in fact, they have plenty of money to take care of an indigent care. That won't change at all. That has no impact on what they do for indigent care, none. I yield back.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Jones. Uh, Commissioner Schlesinger, do you want to speak on the amendment?
Uh, yes, sir.
You're recognized.
I am, uh, not going to, uh, support the amendment, uh, simply because I regard Navisant Health as an important partner of our local government in serving, uh, this community. I want to remind the commissioners that, uh, this was proposed, um, uh, three or four years ago, I can't remember exactly when it was, and it was, uh, proposed at an earlier time in our budget process, and the, uh, reaction from, uh, Navisant, maybe it was the Medical Center at that time, was, was strong, and it was, uh, swift. The message that I remember them, uh, sharing with us is that they wanted us in, you know, what's perhaps a, uh, token way to, um, uh, help fund the indigent care that they were providing to, uh, citizens of this community, and as Ms. Lucas said, the amount of money that they're, um, expending to provide indigent care is much more than the four hundred and fifty thousand that we are giving them, but that token amount was, uh, really a show of, of goodwill, uh, from this commission, from this, uh, community, that there really is a, uh, partnership. I think that to cut funding at this eleventh hour in the, uh, budgeting process to what is the largest employer in Macon Bibb County is not going to, uh, serve this local government or this community in any, uh, meaningful way. I remind you that for every action, there is an equal and opposite reaction, and I think we have to be very, very careful before we, uh, cut funding to what is truly one of our major partners in this community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. Schlesinger, uh, Commissioner Watkins, do you have further comments on the, the?
Uh, yes, sir, I would like to.
Amendment you recognized?
Yes, I would like to rebut, uh, just a few points that, that we've discussed here. Um, one of the big differences, the difference between the Coliseum, um, Health Center and the Navisant Health is that the Medical Center rec- is recognized as a public hospital. They have an obligation to serve, uh, citizens that come through the door, irregardless of their ability to pay. The Coliseum is non-public, they can be a lot harsher, and it does not penalize them in any way, so that is why we do this. They're receiving federal, the col- the Medical Center or Navisant Health is applying for federal dollars and receiving them based upon their ability to provide these type of services. Um, so that is the difference. The Coliseum doesn't want this money because they don't want to provide that service. That is an option that they've made many, many years ago as a business. Um, to the forty-seven, four hundred and seventy-two days of working capital, that is an interesting precedent to begin setting because we fund a lot of non-governmental agencies through our budget. Um, if we set a benchmark of two hundred days or a hundred days working capital, I don't know if the Cherry Blossom Festival should be funded, or the Making Arts Alliance or Keep Macon Be a Beautiful, if we were gonna apply that type of logic to everyone that we fund. Um, and also, that, that type of logic is not giving any thought to what their debt ratios is, what type of capital expenses they need to make throughout the year, or what type of bond rating they need to maintain, and what it takes to maintain that level of bond for a private business. I just haven't heard enough information to know what four hundred and seventy-two days capital means to a business of that size. And thirdly, I, I view our role as public servants of our community as to provide a strong quality of life for our citizens, and I think that access to quality healthcare is a part of that, and funding the only public hospital within probably a hu- ninety to a hundred mile radius, um, is a serious consideration. public hospital within probably a 90 to 100 mile radius is a serious consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Watkins. There are no additional lights on, so I assume you're ready to vote. I'm advised by the county attorney that it takes six votes to pass the budget. Likewise, he's of the opinion that an amendment to the budget would require six affirmative votes. Therefore, all in favor of the amendment to the budget, would you please hold up your hand? Let me count the hands. One, two. And those opposed, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. The amendment fails. That brings us back to the main motion, then. Are there further amendments? Correct. Thank you very much. Mayor Proton Bibbins, I did have your light on earlier, so you're recognized now. Mayor Proton Bibbins.
I intend to vote against the budget. That's what we're coming to now. And my reasons are, I'm in agreement with the raises for the fire department and the sheriff's department. I mean, I think that's critical. That's a strong reason for supporting it. The concerns I have, though, is that I think we could have done some things that would have put us in a different place by now, where even if we had needed to raise taxes, it would have been by a lesser amount. The board voted one time to ask state legislature to reduce that 20% reduction to 10, and I'm not sure that that was a credible effort made to do that. And I think that would have put us in a little bit different place, even when it comes to those employees that we are short and that we need. There was no, there was a resolution made to do more for blight related to this budget. I've seen no credible effort to be willing to do that, and I think that's a real critical thing that we need to be doing. So, therefore, I intend to vote against adoption of this budget.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Bibbins. Commissioner Tillman, you recognize?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I was one of the cosponsors with Commissioner Bibbins to ask for that 10% reduction sent to the legislature. And I wish they would have granted us that opportunity. There were other steps, I understand, today that we could have taken to make that happen, I think, on our own. I am opposed to the 3 mil increase, but overall, this entire budget, I think, is important at this time that we pass it and move forward. For me, the 3 mil increase, I'm hoping, is just a temporary situation for our property owners. I do not think it reflects an opportunity that will include the entire Macon-Bibb County and/or those that's visiting our city. So, in approving this tonight, I want to make it clear that when we consolidated this government, a lot of folks in Macon actually received a tax reduction because they were truly being double taxed. So, I would just say to the citizens of Macon-Bibb County, just know that this, to me, I'm hoping commissioners all will, if we approve this, that it's just a temporary of an increase. We probably should have did it on year one, and we probably wouldn't be in this situation at this time. So, just wanted to share that, and thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Tillman. Commissioner Allen, you have an amendment? Or further discussion?
Further discussion, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I was under the impression, until I found out as of later yesterday, that this government that we are working in right now had close to five years to fulfill the obligations of merging the two governments. And we pushed it and did it in three. And I was also told that the reason we're in this situation right now, having to add millage and such, is because we didn't follow what the state even allowed us to do. And looking back over the budget, I can't vote for this budget either, Mr. Mayor. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Allen. No further lights. I assume you're ready to vote. This is on the main motion passage of the budget as presented. All in favor of passing, well, we can certainly do a roll call. I was just going to request a show of hands again. But, is that all right? Okay. Excuse me? Well, you can raise it, you can raise it high enough for me to see. All in favor of passing the budget, signify by raising your hand. One, two, three. Four, five, six. Those opposed, hold up your hand. One, two, three. Six to three, the budget is adopted. All right. Now, we will go back to the original order of old business, and the next item of old business would be original item A, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission approving the terms of the letter of intent, which shall be the basis for the lease of Lupther Williams Fields with SRO Partners LLC for the operation of a baseball team as a member of the Coastal Plain League, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Architect Pendulum Studios and for other lawful purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item B is an intergovernmental agreement with the Board of Education concerning current stadiums and the use of current stadiums, as well as a new Cowell Ripken Foundation field. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the Public Board of Education for Bibb County and Macon-Bibb County, Georgia, related to the use and ownership of Henderson Stadium, Ed D. Forest Sports Complex, Tom Fontaine Ballpark, and a new multipurpose sports complex behind Matilda Hartley Elementary School and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to approve a new 704 project with the Water Authority, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an acknowledgement and project approval for a new 704 fund project and further purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is item D, which is an intergovernmental agreement with the Macon Water Authority concerning a stormwater utility. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission, governing body of Macon-Bibb County, approving the preparation of an intergovernmental agreement between Macon-Bibb County and the Macon Water Authority, authorizing the authority to provide stormwater management services and operate, maintain, develop, repair, and construct a stormwater management system and utility in Macon-Bibb County and for other purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to contract with Warren Associates for the construction of a new senior citizens center, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute a contract between Macon-Bibb County and Warren Associates, Inc., in the amount of $2,229,000 for the new senior citizen community center to be paid from SPOS funds and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Lucas?
Just wanted to thank all of the commissioners for your support of seniors in this community. Also want to thank the regional commission and others who have worked with the ad hoc committee. There is a grant proposal that's been submitted that would add an additional, if approved in the maximum amount, an additional $850,000 to this total, so that there could be other additional space, as well as other activities carried on in this senior citizens center. And also, the industrial authority, and we want to thank Clifford Whitby and the authority, because they've agreed also to work along with this project, because they categorize it as economic development and economic development activity. And so, we're very, very pleased with that and urge unanimous support for this resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner Lucas. Commissioner Tillman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I, too, am glad to see this project finally moved. I just hope, because somebody asked me about an $850,000 grant and was not aware of it, but just, I'm hoping that they will be able to receive this. I just would also like to be sure that y'all keep the president of the seniors updated, because just based on what I just saw and heard today, you know, there's an ad hoc committee, I don't know if he attended, but, oh, he was there? Okay. Well, it's kind of confusing for him to be at the meeting and then express some of the words that I heard today. So, I was just going to encourage that, but I stand corrected, and then I'm really confused by what I heard earlier. Thank you. But it's glad to see this moving forward. And this commission, I just want to make clear, that the mayor is a part of the commission. So, you know, I know sometimes, people love to say, sometimes, just the commission, and then they single out just the mayor. But the mayor is a part of the commission, and I don't know, it seems like you just get totally blamed for this project. But I just hope when it's built, that we all get the just due and be there, because it's the entire commission that approves this plan, and this is well overdue. And those that are here today know and realize that we are moving forward. And after this vote today, my understanding is a senior center will be built in the next 220 days. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Tillman. No further lights, so request to speak. I assume you're ready to vote. All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to build an additional section of the Oatmuggie Heritage Trail down toward Walnut Creek, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute a contract between Macon-Bibb County and Sam Hall &amp; Sons, Inc., in the amount of $1,7,719.50 for the Oatmuggie Heritage Trail Walnut Creek Extension to be paid from G-DOT grant funds and 2017 bond proceeds and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Mayor Proton Bibbins?
I intend to vote against this, because this is an example of we're taking 2017 bond funds to use for this. We agree that as part of the 2017 bond funds, we would be getting some money to use for blight. And no credible effort, that I know of, has been made to do that, so I can't support this.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Bibbins. No further lights, no further request to speak. I assume you're ready to vote. All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. One, no. The resolution is adopted, eight to one. Next is item G, which is for lights, actually, the installation of lights at Freedom Park. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Middle Georgia Outdoor Lighting, Inc., in the amount of $84,000 for services related to the installation of the Musco lighting equipment for Freedom Park, 2012 SPOS funds, and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. One, no, Commissioner Allen. The resolution is adopted, eight to one. Well, actually, Commissioner Shepherd stepped out, seven to one. The resolution is adopted, seven to one. Next is item H, is the actual lights themselves to install at Freedom Park, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Musco Sports Lighting LLC in the amount of $142,000 for lighting to be installed at the Freedom Park baseball, softball fields, to be paid from 2012 SPOS funds and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. One, no. Passes eight to one. Resolution is adopted. Next is item I, which is a resolution for a lease space in the Macon Terminal Station, or Terminal Building, for use by Business Development Services. This is the committee amendment that contains the updated and accurate square footage, and I'll ask the clerk to read by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Macon-Bibb County Transit Authority for the lease of space in the Terminal Station Building for use by the Macon-Bibb County Business Development Services Department and for other purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Committee of the whole recommends approval of the committee amendment with the updated attachment and figures. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the committee amendment, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee amendment is adopted. Next, item J, is a lease for TSA at the airport, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute a lease agreement with the U.S. General Services Administration for office and workspace located at the Middle Georgia Regional Airport, to be used by the Transportation Security Administration and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is item K, which is a lease agreement for some additional space in the juvenile court building to be occupied by the Department of Juvenile Justice, and I'll ask the clerk to read by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to accept a second renewal of a lease agreement for another year with the State Properties Commission for office space located at 560 Oglethorpe Street, occupied by the Department of Juvenile Justice, with said renewal to begin July the 1st, 2017, and expire on June 30th, 2018, and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution for the Fourth Amendment to the 2018 SPOS Project Timeline, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve the Fourth Amendment to the 2018 SPOS Project Timeline and Budget as presented by the SPOS Project Manager and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Is there further discussion? Hearing, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Bibbins?
Yeah, somehow I missed what this project was. What was the change?
There were actually three changes to the timeline. One concerned the landfill, and it moved money from the purchase, land purchase line to the equipment purchase line, so just shifted some over because he wanted to do that. Second was four hundred thousand dollars for the Oatmuggie Heritage Trail Extension, and that was shifted from 2018 roads other to 2017 roads other. And the final, the final one was the... Yeah, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of blight funds to go to the, fund the Cal Ripken. Those were the changes in the timeline.
Okay.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is item M, which is an ordinance to appropriate the funds for renovations at Luther Williams Ballpark, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission approving and authorizing the appropriation of two million, five hundred thousand from the 2017 SPOSS bond proceeds to provide for stadium improvements to Luther Williams Field in accordance with the SPOSS Project Timeline and Budget and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Mayor Protem Bibbins?
Again, we are using SPOSS funds for a project like this, and I'm just still concerned that we're making no credible effort to do anything about our agreement to do something about, further about the blight.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. Got two no's, Commissioner Allen and Mayor Protem Bibbins. The ordinance is adopted, seven to two. Item N is a resolution for carpet at the Grand Opera House out of SPOSS proceeds, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute a purchase and sell agreement with Bloomsburg Carpet Industries, Inc., for the manufacturing and purchase of carpeting for the Grand Opera House, in the amount of one hundred and seven thousand, nine, one hundred ninety-one dollars and thirty-five cents, to be paid from 2017 bond proceeds and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Mayor Protem Bibbins?
Again, we are using SPOSS proceeds for these kind of items, and we've made no credible effort to do anything to get the funds that we agreed to for blight.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. Passes seven to two, with, again, Commissioner Allen and Bibbins voting no. Item O is an ordinance for the Walker Road landfill in retaining equipment and engineering services, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission approving and authorizing the appropriation of two million, eight hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars from the 2017 SPOSS bond proceeds to provide funding for the purchase of equipment required to begin the closure of Walker Road landfill, and to provide funding for the retention of an engineer to begin the closure process and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Item P is an additional expenditure of SPOSS dollars to repair the roof and restrooms at the Douglas Theater, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing, approving and authorizing the appropriation of two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars from the 2017 SPOSS bond proceeds to provide funding for the Douglas Theater for roof repair and restroom renovations and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Lucas?
Thank you. On the Douglas Theater, I thought that there was, and I had intended to ask about it before, but it was my understanding that there was some additional safety items that needed to be addressed. I guess what we need to do is inquire as to, because I know that they were saying there was a third item that needed to be taken care of at the Douglas Theater.
My recollection, my recollection was that George Mohammed said something about the rigging of the curtains, or something needed repair also, but I suppose the committee would have to look into that and try to figure out what it would cost itself.
What we'll do is just ask about that in the next committee meeting, because from the way he described it, it was a safety issue.
Right.
So...
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas.
All right.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. Got one, one no, and we've got somebody that stepped out, so one, two, actually, two people stepped out, right? So we got, Commissioner Jones stepped out, Commissioner Beckel stepped out, so we've got one, two, three, four, five, six votes for yes, and one vote no, Allen. The ordinance is adopted. Next is item Q, which is an expenditure of additional SPOSS dollars on the Walnut Trail Extension of the Oatmuggie Heritage Trail, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission approving and authorizing the appropriation of four hundred thousand dollars from the 2017 SPOSS bond proceeds to provide funding for the Oatmuggie Heritage Trail Walnut Creek Extension and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. Got one no, still got one, two, three, four, five, six. Commissioner Bibbins votes no, and Commissioner Allen votes no, but I've got one, two, three, four, five, five, five to two, the ordinance is adopted. Item, item R. Item R is an ordinance to expend additional 2017 SPOSS bond proceeds for the multipurpose sports complex, Cal Ripken Field, and I'll ask clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission approving and authorizing the appropriation of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the 2017 SPOSS bond proceeds to provide funding to the Bibb County Board of Education for a multipurpose sports complex blight remediation project at Matilda Hartley Elementary School and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Tillman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. This project here is so needed. Frank Thompson don't like for me to remind folks that he was my principal when I was at Hartley in the second grade, and then I lived a short time over in Bird City. Those kids are about to get something that's just going to be out of this world, and so this is a project that I think is needed, and I look forward to seeing its completion. And I think it's some language in here that I think finally we will address Henderson Stadium as well, and so I look forward to all of this by 2018 and next year and seeing what it looks like.
Thank you, Commissioner Tillman. Commissioner Watkins, you're next.
I know this is a SPOSS project, and the vote was getting real close, so I just wanted to point out that, you know, this is working at Macon Little League located in District Five, and this is a real good project that'll benefit a lot of kids in the community of District Five.
Thanks, Commissioner Watkins. I appreciate that. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. Got one, one no, Commissioner Allen. All right. All right, the ordinance is adopted. Item S is a, these are sports lights for Central City Park, coming out of 2017 SPOSS bond proceeds, and I'll ask clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Musco Sports Lighting, LLC, in the amount of three hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars for lighting to be installed at Central City Park Football Multipurpose Fields, one through four, to be paid from 2017 SPOSS bond proceeds and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. Got one no, Commissioner Allen. The resolution is adopted. Item T is the labor and contract to install the lighting at Central City Park that we just bought, so I'll ask clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Middle Georgia Outdoor Lighting, Inc., in the amount of a hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars for lighting to be installed at the Central City Park Football Multipurpose Fields, one through four, to be paid from 2017 SPOSS bond proceeds and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. Got one no, Commissioner Allen, eight to one. The resolution is adopted. Next is item U, which is a resolution in a blight project in District Two, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to acquire ten vacant lots and demolish six blighted structures located on First Street, Edgewood Avenue, Telfair Street, and Elm Street, using blight bond funds in the amount of a hundred and forty-two thousand allocated to Macon-Bibb County Commission District Two and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. Got one no, Commissioner Allen. The resolution is adopted. Item V is another blight project using District Two blight funds, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to acquire one vacant lot and demolish two blighted structures located on Schaefer Place and Norris Street, using blight bond funds in the amount of forty-four thousand dollars allocated to Macon-Bibb County Commission District Two and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. Got one no, Commissioner Allen. The resolution is adopted, eight to one. Item W is another blight remediation project, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to acquire and demolish six blighted structures located on Houston Avenue, Violet Avenue, Giles Street, Bay Street, and Hawthorne Street, using blight bond funds in the amount of a hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred dollars allocated to Macon-Bibb County Commission District Two and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. One no, Commissioner Allen. The resolution is adopted, eight to one. Next is item X, which is a, an expenditure of blight bond funds for a storm drain project in Bartlett Crossing, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to issue a request for bids for repair work on the storm drainage ditch located on Bartlett Street, and to approve the allocation of seventy-two thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars in blight bond funds from Macon-Bibb County Commission District Five for the Bartlett Street Storm Drainage Project and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. Resolution is adopted. Item Y is a resolution to allow the vehicle maintenance to sell fuel to not-for-profit organizations, and I'll ask clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing vehicle maintenance to sell fuel to outside nonprofit agencies located within Macon-Bibb County utilizing the key card system and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Item Z is a settlement of a claim against Macon-Bibb County and the Sheriff's Office, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing settlement in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars of any and all claims, demands, or damages against Macon-Bibb County and former Bibb County Sheriff's Office Deputy LeKay Howard arising out of or connected in any way to old scene Bernard Morris, Administrator of the State of Jarvis Bernard Poole Senior at AL versus Macon-Bibb County Consolidated Government at AL, Civil Action Number One Fourteen, C V O O Eight Nine Two Dash A T, pending in the United States District Court for the Northern District of Georgia and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Tillman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. This is, here is just a travesty and a shame that we have to be paying and approving such a low amount, but I think it's worthy to share with the public that we are a part of a lawsuit that just paying our part and a portion. Don't know what else this young man, family received, but it's certainly noted that our sheriff has taken steps to make sure these issues don't continue to happen under this new consolidated government and the merger, so I wish we could give the family more. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Tillman. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. Got, got one no, Commissioner Jones. The ayes have it, eight to one. And the resolution is adopted. Next is item double A, and that is the five-year, short-term work program and capital improvement for the Middle Georgia Regional Commission and compliance review, and I'll ask clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon, of the mayor and Macon-Bibb County Commission approving the submission of the Macon-Bibb County five-year, short-term work program and capital improvement element to the Middle Georgia Regional Commission for compliance review and for other purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item double B is a grant for the Veterans Court, and I'll ask clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the State of Georgia Council of Accountability Courts Judges Funding Committee for physical year 2018, in the amount of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars, requiring local matching funds of seventeen thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars, for a total of a hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars, awarded to the Macon Judicial Circuit Veterans Court in substantially the same form as the heretofore attached Exhibit A and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the, uh, uh, resolution is adopted. Item double C, uh, is a, a similar, uh, grant to the Mental Health Court, and I'll ask clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the State of Georgia Council of Accountability Court Judges Funding Committee for fiscal year 2018 in the amount of $208,537, requiring local matching funds of $23,171 for the total of $231,708 awarded to the Macon Judicial Circuit Mental Health Court in substantially the same form as attached heretofore as Exhibit A and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item double D, um, i- is a, a resolution for an additional, uh, grant, um, this to the drug, for drug charges and mental health issues, and I'll ask the clerk to read that, uh, by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding accepting a grant from the Office of the Governor, Criminal Justice Coronating Council, in the amount of $127,702 for the purpose of establishing specialty courts or dockets to address offenders arrested for drug charges or mental health issues and for other purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Uh, item double E, uh, is a, a, a similar, uh, grant for juvenile justice, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission accepting an additional grant award in the amount of $12,684 from the Juvenile Justice Incentive Grant Program Funding Committee and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Uh, item double F, um, is a, a grant, uh, from the Downtown Challenge Fund, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to accept a grant in the amount of $60,000 from the Downtown Challenge Fund of the Community Foundation of Central Georgia, Inc., for additional development of downtown Macon and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Barry Alberts Doing Business as City Visions Associates, LLC, in a form approved by the county attorney for related consulting services and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Uh, item double G was the budget. Uh, that's already been, uh, handled. That brings us to item, uh, double I. Oh, is that an H?
That's an H.
Actually, this, I, I jumped over H, excuse me. Uh, the, item double H, which is an appointment to the, uh, Family and Children Services, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission reappointing Nancy White to serve as a board member of the Macon-Bibb County Department of Family and Children Services and for other lawful purposes.
The Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. That brings us to item double I, uh, whi- which is, uh, an ordinance to revise the hours of operation at Sandy Beach, and I'll ask clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission revising Section 17-60 to include operation hours for Sandy Beach Water Park to provide an adoption and effective date and to provide for other lawful purposes.
Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Uh, item double J, uh, is a, an ordinance about, uh, a photo monitoring systems for passing a school bus, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission revising Section 16-34, photo monitoring systems to enforce passing stopped school buses in order to reflect distribution of fines imposed upon the ordinance, to provide an adoption and effective date, and to provide for other lawful purposes.
The Public Safety Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Uh, item double K, uh, is, uh, to declare an additional holiday on Monday, uh, July the third, uh, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing a one-time suspension of the holiday pay schedule as designated in Section 5.04 of the Macon-Bibb County Government Policies and Procedures Manual regarding the 2017 Fourth of July Holiday to include July third, 2017, as a paid holiday and for other lawful purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the ordinance, uh, is adopted. Uh, next is a resolution to change our meeting date, uh, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve the postponement of the July the fourth, 2017 regular commission meeting until Wednesday, July the fifth, 2017, at 6:00 PM, with the pre-commission meeting to be held immediately preceding said regular commission meeting at 5:00 PM and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. That brings us to item double M, uh, which is a contract with Warren Associates for additional improvements, uh, at the South Macon-Bibb Recreation Center, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor or his designate to execute a change order to the construction contract between Macon-Bibb County and Warren Associates, Inc., in the amount of $1,883,500 for the construction of additional improvements to the South Macon-Bibb Recreation Center, which are required to accomplish the intent of the project as described in the original bid documents to be paid from 2017 SPOS bond proceeds and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
No.
One no, that's Commissioner Allen. The, uh, resolution is adopted, eight to one. Uh, and that brings us to item double N, uh, which is a resolution to deny an alcohol beverage license renewal application, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission denying the alcohol beverage license renewal application submitted on behalf of Bee Hall Petroleum, Inc., doing business as Supergas, located at 2760 Montpelier Avenue pursuant to Chapter Four of the Macon-Bibb County Code of Ordinances and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Uh, is there, uh, further discussion? Commissioner Watkins?
Um, the question was asked earlier, why? I recognize, it seemed like those members have met, uh, left now, but just in case not, um, the, again, it's been mentioned, 144 incidents of viola, uh, of violence or police calls since, since 2015. Um, in 2010, there were two shootings at that location. In 2015, a teenager by the name of Michael Hardy was shot there. Verconis Redden in 2015. Andre Teller died in 2017 on that location. Um, and understand that the location or the business isn't the root cause of the problems, but an uncanny amount of incidents on that, in that location seem to happen. And noting that there's, there are more than a couple of light business convenience stores in that area who now have nearly this amount of service calls or violence incidents. And I believe this just isn't the culture that our city wants to promote. Having a beer and wine license is a privilege in, in our community. Um, and these type of incidents and these type of situations, I just, I want us to be a better city than that. So, that's my re- rationale for pushing for this denial.
Thank you, Commissioner Watkins. Is there further discussion? Uh, hearing none, all in favor of the resolution to deny the alcohol beverage license renewal application signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it, uh, the resolution is adopted. Uh, that brings us to, uh, item double O, uh, which is an intergovernmental, uh, agreement, um, for economic development purposes, and I'll ask the clerk, uh, to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve the intergovernmental agreement related to the distribution of payment in lieu of taxes related to Project Bengal and for other purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, uh, of the ordinance?
Resolution.
Resolution.
All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Um, there are no items of new business, uh, to be referred tonight, uh, but again, please check the agenda that'll come out on Friday because I'm confident that the attorney's office will be sending down additional items for referral to our committees that will meet next Tuesday, uh, June the 27th, in Commission Meeting Room beginning at nine o'clock, um, that Tuesday. Now, that brings us now to, uh, public comments on non-agenda items.
We also had those ones, you know, that I had written on there. Did you hand them back to me? There were two of them, had an agenda and a non-agenda.
Oh, I'll, I'll ask Janice to look for those again. There were a couple of them that had a non-agenda item as well as an agenda item that...
Sarah Hunt.
Yeah, you can hand, hand them, hand them back to me. Sarah Hunt, I know she left.
Yeah.
Well, (laugh) Robert Daniels, uh, uh, i- if, if Mr. Daniels is here, he wants to talk to us about Removal and Transport LLC and to present his company as primary of removal and storage for the coroner's office. Uh, Mr. Daniels, thank you for your patience. So, you're recognized for five minutes. If you would come to the podium, we'd be glad to hear from you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, if I would be permitted to pass out a few of the brochures?
That, that would be fine. That, you have to get fairly close to, to the microphone to speak, but you can give those to Commissioner Tillman, and he'll pass them down. Mr. Daniels, you're recognized for five minutes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To the county commissioners, thank you all for giving me the moment to speak. My name is Robert Daniels. I'm the owner of Daniels Removal and Transport Service. I've been in business here in Macon now for three years, uh, serving the Macon-Bibb County Coroner's Office, Life Link of Georgia, Med Care, and several funeral homes in the middle of Georgia and the southeastern region. I'm here today to present to you all a well-established professional business for its removals and storage. As you know, back in the day, the Bill, the Medical Center, which is not an advocate health, used to store the deceased bodies for the Bill County Coroner's Office. But due to spaceability and everything, the coroner was forced to have to reach outside of that department as far as finding somewhere to store the deceased until they was decided on by the family what funeral home they would go to. And by doing that, it occurred him to have to pick several funeral homes and put in rotation for the removals, several funeral homes with very small storage spaces to do storage for the unknown until he could find others causes through the state. Through my business, I have a well-secured facility over on Hillcrest Avenue, which is, uh, secured by ADT, which is have, uh, cameras inside and outside of the location, 24/7 monitoring. Oh, with this, in this facility, I have it set up so that families can come by and verify or identify a lot of their loved ones. A lot of the families, when tragedy hit, they like to come by and visit their loved ones before they decide on what funeral home they would like to pick for the service. At this facility, I have the accommodation. At this facility, I have a nine-body mortuary morgue where now that the coroner is picking several funeral homes in rotations. I'm here to present this business to the Macon-Bibb County as a one-stop shop. Uh, the county, accounting officer would not have to worry about several different POs each month, you know, for is one PO for removal and transports, one PO for storage. I have all this, this one si- facility. This time, I would like for the county commissioners to think of this situation, think of what I'm having to offer to you all. From the previous months that I've worked with coroner Leon Jones and the molly bars and talking with the public, the ones that have visited this facility and used it was very pleased with it. And I would like to extend this service to the Macon-Bibb County Coroner's Office and the citizens of Macon, Georgia.
Mr. Daniels, thank you very much for, for the information. We appreciate your patience and appreciate you being here with us tonight. Thank you. Uh, next, Mr. George Brown wants to talk to us about, about golf course concessions. Uh, Mr. Brown, you're recognized for five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the Macon-Bibb Commissioners for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm going to talk to you about something that's not going to cost money. We spent a lot of money here tonight, and, uh, we have one of the finest golf courses, uh, in the Middle Georgia area, and it needs some improvement. And that improvement surrounds itself with the number of patrons that we have to come out and play at that golf course. I represent both the men's, uh, the Bowden Men's Golf Association and also the Bowden Senior Men Golf Association. And we went to one of our vendors, and they made a proposal to provide a kiosk in the golf club that would provide sandwiches and drinks and water and other things. And, uh, he would do that for free. And we sent that, uh, to the manager, and the manager of the golf course sent it to Parks and Planning, and we heard nothing from it for months and months. In the meantime, we've had several tournaments where we've invited guests from all over the country and all over the state, and then it's an embarrassment when they come here and they have no place to get food. So, as an appeasement, I guess someone decided to put a Coke machine in, just one Coca-Cola machine, and, and, and that's not satisfactory. We need to complete kiosks, and we're getting it for free. All we have to do is allow that company to put the kiosk in, and then we're, we're, we're satisfied with that particular item. We've, we've also, uh, had, uh, we have upcoming the New Era Golf Tournament. The New Era Golf Tournament is the oldest golf tournament, uh, in the United States for golfers who could not play on regular tour. Uh, so, those people will be coming from all over the country to Macon, Georgia. Okay, this is the 59th event of this tournament, and we need to have that kiosk in place when that tournament happens, uh, the first weekend of August. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Brown. Appreciate your patience. Appreciate you being here, and, uh, it, thank you very much. Uh, I think Jeff Cresson was here earlier but left. Mr. Cresson, are you still here?
(inaudible).
I'm sorry.
(inaudible).
Put him on, on an agenda for the committee? Mr. Cresson, are you still here? I'm sorry. Put him on an agenda for the committee? Right. I'm confident that that's going to be on an upcoming committee meeting. Right. And we can, we can certainly notify them so that they can attend the committee meeting, I suppose would be the appropriate thing. And also Tony Dooley, Mr. Dooley was here to talk about Rosa Parks, but he may have left as well. But I think your suggestion is well taken. We can notify them since we have the address and tell them that it's, when it's going to be on a committee agenda. Did either of those other two that wanted to... Both of them have left. So that exhausts all of the people that wanted to speak to us on non-agenda items, and that concludes our agenda for tonight. Can I get a motion to adjourn without objection? We are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.